Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Wednesday, December 4th, in the council chambers of Ojai City Hall. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commissions on items appearing on the agenda requested to complete a speaker card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission and not to the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey orders of the Chair. Roll call.
Crabtree, Becker.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Merk.
Here.
Nicklin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Commissioner Becker would do the pledge of allegiance, please.
(Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.)
The Public Communications item is for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no other action on non-agendralized items can be taken at this meeting. Do we want to open the ... Is there any member of the public wishing to address the ...
There's one. That's okay. Theresa Cheney. And I moved to Ojai last February, and we just came to show support for that Deck the Halls event that was supposed to happen this weekend, but apparently there's some ... the city didn't want to allow it to happen because of noise and parking and other problems, so we're just here to support and say that we think it's a good, fun time, and we'd like it to happen.
Thank you.
Informational item, if you don't mind, Chair. The city has revised the conditions of approval, and the event is been ... the conditions of approval have been signed off by the applicant, and the event is on at this point.
Thank you. The consent items, the consent calendar is approved by roll call on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. So we have two minutes, sets of minutes, from November 6th and November 20th.
So I'll move, we approve the minutes of the November 6th meeting.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
I think Nolan ...
Well, you know, I need to abstain. I was mixing the dates up.
And Osborne.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll move, we approve the minutes of the November 20th meeting.
Second.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Abstain.
And Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Thank you. The Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. I see the representative is not here this evening. The next meeting is December 16th, and Commissioner Becker is ...
The meeting's been canceled.
Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts, if we're doing this tonight, if we can ...
I did drive by the site that we're ... that's item number three. It's a little hard to get inside that fence, so I didn't need to, didn't feel I needed to.
I am also somewhat familiar with that site.
I drove by the site tonight to look at it. I also had a conversation with Chet Helgers, who has a property across the street regarding the process, but I don't see him here tonight. He said he wanted to speak on the project when it comes forward.
I visited the site today.
And I too visited the site.
I visited the site.
So we'll go on to public hearing item number three. It's been moved to our next meeting, but staff are going to give a short overview on it.
Yes, good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. As the Chair noted, the item on the agenda tonight at 214 Bryant Street is going to be continued to December 18th. And that's due to some noticing requirements. The parcel that was identified in 300-foot radius map was a parcel that was just adjacent to the subject parcel, so we needed to redo the radius map and send out the correct noticing. But staff is requesting that the Planning Commission continue the item to December 18th. So I can give a brief description on the project, or we can just open the public hearing, whatever you would like to do.
Would anyone in the commission like ...
I'd like to hear about it from staff.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
So the project proposed is a small collection recycling facility at 214 Bryant Street. The applicant is Louis Duran, and the property owner is Ann Adamson. The project is located in the M1 light industrial zone, and recycling facility ... there's three types of recycling facilities. There's the reverse vending machine, there's small collection recycling facilities, and large collection recycling facilities. The small collection recycling facility, which we have classified this proposed project as, requires a conditional use permit. However, it is allowed in an M1 industrial zone with approval of the CUP. So the applicant is proposing to locate the facility on 214 Bryant Street. This is a place where the customers can redeem their CRV bottles and cans. It includes the placement of two steel cargo containers, one for glass and one for plastic and aluminum. In addition, the facility would have a trash receptacle for items that don't meet the qualifications for CRV redemption. And those items would be disposed of on a daily basis by the person working at the recycling center. The site would include four parking spaces. One of them would be ADA compliant, and a portable bathroom would be located on-site. The facility would have one operator at all times, and the collection times are proposed for Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I plan to give a bigger presentation on December 18th, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Any questions for staff?
So I would suggest opening the public hearing and continuing the open public hearing so that we don't need to do additional noticing for December 18th.
Thank you. So I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to talk, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Tim Dewar. I am a resident of Ojai, and I noticed from the packet that the traffic study that was done for this particular project was taken from using traffic figures from another community. And I guess I would like to see some figures from the previous facility in Minor's Oaks. I mean, that was a long-running operation. I'm sure that it would be easy to get some figures from that that would be more representative of the type of response that these facilities got here in Ojai rather than somewhere else. So I would hope that there would be some effort put into looking at that, and would have at least have those figures available for the next meeting, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else from the floor?
We can move the public hearing open.
We'll leave the public communication open until the next meeting? Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to need a motion to ...
I'll make a motion to continue a conditional use permit, CUP 1305, to a date certain being December 18th, with the public portion to remain open.
I'll second that.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
We'll move on to our next item. It's Director Report and Director Actions.
For your front items that came in in the last few weeks, pretty straightforward, some zoning letters, a improvement plan for some landscaping, Christmas tree sales, and then a temporary use permit that we've been dealing with. If there's any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
If you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions?
Anne, thanks for coming up with a solution for the Ojai Rancho Inn. I'm really looking forward to going to that event, and I was disappointed to hear that they weren't going to be able to do it, so I'm glad you figured out a way to do that.
Anne, could you explain what the ... I read the letter, but what came about?
With regard to the Rancho Inn, we had an application for a temporary use permit come in on the 21st of November. It came in on the day that the applicant had a meeting with myself, and I had included the city manager because I wanted continuity as they go forward in the process. They have been holding special events at that facility. In September, they did some concerts, there's been some weddings, and the city is under the understanding and has informed the applicant that they need a conditional use permit to conduct those types of outdoor events and where you're bringing all those types of people onto the site at one time. And so she wanted to have a meeting with us just to discuss her questions and issues that she had with the conditional use permit application. As a part of that, towards as a separate conversation that she had with me, she indicated that they did have this pop-up commercial event scheduled for December 7th, and was trying to find out how to go about getting approval for that event. I indicated that the only way at this point to try to get approval for a one-day event would be to look at our temporary use ordinance. Temporary use ordinance has very specific requirements for what can qualify for a temporary use permit. There are the Christmas tree lots, but there's more nonprofits related to that. Similarly, where you get into the category of arts and crafts and things that way, it talks about nonprofit. If it's a school site, we don't regulate the temporary use permit aspect. If it's a public site, we do not regulate it through the temporary use permit process. In this case, they were trying to do it for profit. They had indicated that they were willing to do a donation and things that way, and they were indicating that they would be willing to secure parking, but we didn't have a lot of details. Because the event was turning, coming up so quickly, we evaluated the application, reviewed it in-house, and determined that we had some concerns with the parking, had some concerns with the pedestrian safety along a highway where there could be parking. The neighbors in the area have had issues with the previous events that have occurred there because of the noise, and so we had concerns with the noise aspect because they were proposing to do some music. And so there are a number of issues that we felt were outstanding that we didn't have answers to address, or we didn't have information to address those. So we did propose a denial letter, submitted that to her, and then through working with the city attorney, the city manager's office, and myself, we tried to reevaluate whether there was ways that if we could condition it, whether there'd be a way for us to approve it. So today, we came up with seven various conditions, and they were included in the information that you got late in the evening. We were still dealing with this right at about 5:00. But there are seven conditions that we have applied to them. We've asked them. They indicated they're going to do a shuttle bus, they were going to use hotels on the East End. We felt that was too far. We felt that giving them the option of using Rotary Park or other public parking lots was a possible solution for them, so we encouraged that. We have discussed the noise aspect with them through these conditions, business license. We want verification that there's a sponsorship of some charity. We have indicated that they're to provide adequate pedestrian and vehicle circulation, and that they're required to get any permits from other agencies.
Well, I appreciate the effort, and I think I too agree with John. I think it's probably a positive thing, and I'm glad to see that it got worked out.
I have a quick question, kind of not necessary in relation to that, but I know that there was the issue of that being a highway, or I don't know where the highway ends and picks up again, or if it does. The fact that there isn't a no parking sign there, does that mean you can park there, or is it still a problem to park on that highway?
I have seen people park. I don't know legally where it stands, that's up to the police department, but I would indicate that the applicant has indicated that they have hired security, and that they're going to be pointing people to the various parking lots that they have secured. It's my understanding they've worked with Caldwell Banker and maybe some other tenants along there. But with Rotary Park, if they use that with a shuttle bus, hopefully we can prevent some of that aspect. There's concerns with that, and it is Caltrans right away.
And then I know the ongoing, you know, taking aside the holiday event issue for the neighbors has largely been the noise.
That's my understanding. It could be traffic also, I'm not sure of parking.
Yeah, that can be an issue. And I know we have a noise ordinance, but there's certain hours that come along with that, correct?
Correct.
And I don't know if decibels.
Yes, both.
Can you explain a little bit for all of us, so we kind of know?
Yes. I don't know that I've got a copy right here, but there are standards for daytime. It depends on what your zone is, and there's certain decibels that can go between, I think it's 7:00 a.m., 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And then it has to reduce after those hours until, again, 7:00 a.m. There are provisions in that ordinance for a one-minute increment, a five-minute increment if you're above that, and I think a 20, 15-minute increment. For certain cases, there are times that those need to be exceeded because of the type of work that's being occurring. But they would be required to comply with the city's ordinances, and one of those is the noise ordinance.
So if they comply with all the ordinances, the noise and the parking, pedestrian, and a hotel like that wants to have music, whatever, do they require CUP, or is it within their rights?
That's where we're still having that discussion in-house, and in fact, the city attorney has recommended that we need to look at our ordinance. I think that one aspect of the commercial zone speaks to the fact that if there is a requirement under the notes, if we go through the uses in the C1 zone, there's at the very end, there are six notes. Item five on that note is that all uses are to be conducted inside, or in some ways, and I don't have it right in front of me, but some way, in an enclosed structure, not outdoor. And so the question becomes, if you're doing weddings and things like that, you're in the C1 zone, but you're outside, so that would have to go to a CUP situation. And I think it's unless a CUP is granted, in fact, is the way the wording is. So I think from our standpoint, we're looking at outdoor activities like that in our commercial zone are going to need a CUP. I think some of the lawyers are discussing things, and we'll have to figure that out. But as of right this minute, that section is on our books, and it seems to apply. Does that address your question? Great.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll go on to item number five, current code enforcement.
We're actively working on code enforcement on a daily basis, and trying to work through these and get compliance, and so you've got your updated list, and we're actively pursuing.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you. Item number six, future agenda items.
Certainly, and I'm sorry, could we go back up to number four under the Director's Report? I apologize. We have one added item. I'm sorry, Mr. Grant. Our Public Works Division has asked to come and do an informational item to you, and I'd like to do it. It was short notice because of their deadlines, but it's something that they're trying to pursue, so I wanted to give them the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and then we'll go forward from there.
Thank you.
Thank you for fitting me in, I appreciate it. No offense taken for skipping over me, that's fine.
(Laughter).
Yes, I was hoping this is primarily a Parks and Recreation Commission and City Council issue, but in last year's budget, the City Council approved a canopy out at Sarzati Park to cover part of the barbecue picnic areas. So it was approved in the capital improvement plan, and it was reviewed with the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. And it's primarily their issue, but we have, through some of the estimates and grant applications we're going through right now, we found a company that provides recycled materials. They actually make the frame and structure out of recycled aluminum. So the great part about that is we have a special fund, which we have difficulty using. It's an AB 939 fund, and so we can use that to help fund this. So it turns out, because of that, we may be able to cover both the primary barbecue, the bigger barbecue picnic area over there, as well as a smaller one. So I was hoping to show you a quick picture of a concept we had on this, and just see if you had any input. And I plan to talk to the Parks and Rec Commission about this more tomorrow. And the real concern would be that I think when people, they really, there seems to be a big demand to have a shade structure in general for the summer, and the reliability in the winter, that you don't have to worry about the rains. But there is an area that, I'll show the picture, let's see, the, if you can tell this angle, it's from where the CrossFit area is, behind the Boyd Center. And so we're looking here, and you can see on the left-hand side, there is the new restroom. And here's the major barbecue area, picnic and barbecue area. And there's other one, there's another one that's kind of a little hard to see here, but there's a very large oak tree right about here, and this is another, a second barbecue area. So on hot days, everybody wants, and even a couple weeks ago was pretty darn hot, believe it or not, and there was two groups that reserved the two barbecue areas and picnic areas, but it wasn't delineated which one got which, and they kind of almost broke into a brawl because it was a hot enough day, and they wanted the shade, so they wanted that tree to be there for shade, even a couple weeks ago. So it kind of brought up the point that this area would, now that it appears we could fund this, that we could have put a shade structure there as well. So I was really looking for any input that you might have. Some people say, well, it's nice to be out in the open air, in the sun, and so on, but generally, people are looking for the shade in the summer, and the reliability in the winter to have an area that's protected. And there's plenty of other areas that can always move out to the sides, like they do at Soul Park. I think there's about six different shade structures at Soul Park that people tend to reserve, and use that for their primary gathering, and they go outside of that. So here's a neat Photoshop insert of what it will look like with the, you know, the shade structure inserted. That's the primary one there. And then here's another neat Photoshop with a second one put in here to the side. So you can see that one in the back, and then this one. So this is what we're considering right now with the additional funding that we seem to be able to come up with now. And I thought I'd show also a picture. This isn't the correct size, but it shows the concept. These are the aluminum columns and the beams up here, and even the roofing can be aluminum. There's a couple options on that. But if you do the aluminum roofing, you land up with this, it's not the greatest aesthetic on it, it's, the underside isn't so attractive. So this is a neat option to put tongue and groove wood underneath on the bottom side that really appears, improves the aesthetics of it. So I was hoping for, to hear any input you might have, if you just think this is a rotten idea, or if you think it would work all right.
Any comments from ...
My only suggestion is, if it's possible, is to have them put on the south-facing side of that first structure, put maybe towards the top of the structural posts, maybe a couple feet apart, some hooks, so that you might need to put some canvas across there that, I've been there.
You're saying the south side would be this side over here?
Yeah, that sun can, the shade will actually throw over to the outside of the unit, so maybe just if they could pre-manufacture those in, if it becomes a problem, it'd be real easy to throw canvas up there, whatever, and provide more shade.
Okay, appreciate that, that's a good point. Yeah, that's on the low sun, in the middle of the summer, it could really cast over, good point.
So if you don't use the aluminum or metal sheathing, roof sheathing, what would be the option?
Well, the option would be, and I guess we don't have a shot of it here, but if you, for instance, the first shelter when you go into Soul Park, I mean, they've got timber columns, and timber, it's laminated wood beams that arch over the top like this, so, and they even have, I think that's a composite roof on that one, I forget.
So just be a regular shingled roof?
So it'd be just, it'd be straight wood all the way across, and it has a nice appearance, but it is prone a little bit to people carving their initials into ...
So if there's wood, there's going to be maintenance, right? For abstaining and versus like using steel columns and that sort of thing? Maybe consider a combination of the two. I really like the ceiling, I think that's very attractive, but I think that in combination with steel, no maintenance, it's a done deal, it'll last forever, you do your powder coating, and makes it easy in the long run, probably less expensive, too.
It seems that way, and I think that this wood being protected by the roof should keep it out of the sun from damage. There might be some water damage if it was ever hit by branches and things that water get through, so we can keep an eye on the moisture getting through, but it's probably inevitable we might see a stain there eventually, yeah.
Natural looks good, though.
Yeah, definitely.
Seems like a nice combination, instead of, seen a lot of carports where it's just straight, you know, corrugated metals.
It holds up really well, as long as it doesn't get water stained in it, and actually, a clear coat of some sort will protect it well.
Okay.
Greg, will you, will you be able to actually put the structures in without damaging the trees that are there, or is that doable?
Of course, of course, that's always the goal, and we're careful about it. So these, it is interesting, I mean, some people have thought there's quite a few trees, you know, on this side, there's, I think there's sycamores, there's about four sycamores on this side, and they just take a long time to come around for full shade, a little bit like at Libby Playground, there was a few trees that used to shade it, but they just are slow coming back. So primarily, there's the one, two, it's about right here, this really big, it's a really, really big live, not live oak, but valley oak right there. So we'll have to be very careful about placing those columns around that area. We'll see if we can create a longer span on that side to avoid them, or else we'll have to hand dig those foundations and avoid that root.
Generally, I think it's, I agree, it's a great improvement, and I agree with Stephen. I think the combination of the wood underside and then using the metal and the components, or steel columns and what have you, is a nice combination.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something if that, it was nice to do this Photoshop to get the idea of if it's too massive or not. I still think there's a lot of room in that whole back area, it doesn't overtake it, and it ...
Greg, is the secondary cover, is it, is it smaller? Is that what you said? Or are they roughly the same size?
This one, where it's about 30 foot wide, about 60, 70 long. This one was smaller, I think it's about 25 wide by about 50 something, so it's still pretty large, surprisingly. I assume this would be a lot bigger, we measured it out, it's close, but not as big.
And the slabs are already in place, or ...
Slabs will be part of the project. Part of this project is a CDBG grant, and it's primarily, you get points for having, improving ADA accessibility. So the idea is to put a new sidewalk all the way out to it, and then remove all of the sold asphalt in here, on both of those, and put in concrete.
And then they'll have picnic tables in?
In all those picnic tables. And that's part of the, actually, we were under program to replace those picnic tables, any of the older ones anyhow.
Yeah, very nice.
Sounds like good support, then? We should not be too concerned. All right, okay. Well, thank you, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Item six.
So go on to item number six, future agenda items.
Well, this evening, you continue the recycling center to the 18th. We will also be looking at the RV park that's proposed on Bryant Street. We'll have the revision to the second unit compliance program regarding the termination date, and I believe we'll also be hearing discussion about the HEITH ordinance, because the council has referred that back to the Planning Commission. And with regard to that, there is a planning, there is a field trip that ... And with regard to that, there is a planning, there is a field trip that the city manager and I, and if there's members of the planning commission, we can take up to three planning commissioners and not have an issue with the Brown Act. That is on December 11th at 9:00 AM, going up to Santa Barbara to discuss the solar access. So I know some of the members have already indicated they are not available. I just want to make sure if anyone is interested. That's the date we're going, at 9:00 AM, and we'd like to know if you're interested, so we don't leave without you. Upcoming after that, we have the cancellation of our meeting on January 1st. On January 14th is the joint meeting with the city council. And then on the 15th, Wednesday, we're looking at the AT&amp;T Cellular Wireless site at Grand Avenue.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Planning Commission Subcommittee reports. Do we have anything?
Very brief. Complete Streets, we met today, and we actually went over some of our goals and objectives for 2014, and we didn't have a full, our typical full committee today, so I'll probably bring that back in January and just share some of the projects that we're looking at. And of course, a chance to review those with Greg. He wasn't able to attend today. And as far as the water ordinance, or the model, I always get it mixed up, the model water landscape ordinance, I actually submitted the final draft to the city, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and they're going to be reviewing it, and I think they hope to have it ready by the end of the year. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, last but not least, our city council liaison.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of things. Apparently, there has been an upsurge in one of those vacation, you know, vacation rentals by owner sites, which basically is where people decide to rent their house or their guesthouse by the night, and collect who knows what, $150, $400, or whatever, but they don't necessarily are registered as a bed and breakfast or whatever, and of course, they don't necessarily charge TOT. So just keep your eyes out, open for that, because really, it's unfair to our, shall I say, our legitimate hotels who go by the book. And it's also, to me, the big issue is, I mean, I live in an R1 or R2 zone, and I really do not want my neighbors on either side renting out rooms by the night. I mean, there's strangers, there's new cars in the neighborhood, whatever, and they're not paying TOT, but they're taking advantage of the, basically, ambience of Ojai to rent these rooms. So I think that's something everyone should keep an eye on. And if you do keep an eye, and report it to Susie, if you see any ads like that, it's very helpful, because she'll send a letter out saying what's going on with this. It's a very tough question. In some senses, well, maybe some of them could be legal, but again, it depends on the neighbors. I mean, if you bought in an R1 or R2 zone, do you really want your house next door to you to be used as a bed and breakfast? It's always this ethical question. That's not the neighborhood you bought into. So I have lots of issues with it, but it's very hard to see what the right thing to do is. But certainly, doing it illegally, not applying for a bed and breakfast possibility, not allowing your neighbors to have their, speak their mind, and then not paying transit occupancy tax is a big issue. We live on transit occupancy tax, basically. That is our main source of income. So to me, it's a very important issue. So I was, I even got just a blatant email from whatever saying, here are these wonderful rentals, you know, and some of them were like $6,000 for the week. I'm not saying necessarily all of them in the city. Most of them are maybe big places in the county. And the county's not that concerned about it, because the amount of income they generate from rentals for, you know, hotels is not at all a big part of their income. But certainly for the city of Ojai, it is a darn big part of our income. So I think everybody should pay attention to these, and if you see anything, you can report it to Sherry. It's hard. In the ad, they'll never give you addresses. They'll just say, "Close to the center of town, walking distance," you know, "$400 a night," or whatever, you know. You can see it's a little back building on the lot, it's tongue-in-groove, and somebody set it up and decides that's the way they can pay their mortgage. So there's a lot of issues attached to it, but it's always struck me as something that we have to keep our eye on. So it seems to be cropping up again. But report it to Susie. You can even try to call sometimes, and you might get the address, but you may not. Noise ordinance. Thank you, Ann, for bringing that up. Once again, gas leaf blowers have raised their ugly head. Right now, our noise ordinance is very clear, as far as allowing gas blowers with all their noise and pollution by putting the, basically, all the blower stuff into the air is, to me, not being enforced and very hard to enforce. So if you have somebody, a gardening company, come to your neighborhood, and they're using gas blowers, which are very noisy, for the police to enforce it, someone would have to call, they'd have to catch them in the act, and then have a citation, et cetera. But that's not going to happen. By the time you would call the police and they came out, they probably were no longer using the gas blowers. I think it is certainly a public education to allow residents to know, to tell their gardening company not to use gas blowers because of the incredible noise they make and the pollution. Right now, if you look at the noise ordinance, there are, gas blowers could be used in commercial zones, such as our downtown area, and only certain hours, and they are not to be used in residential zones. But anywhere you go, on any Monday or Tuesday, you will hear gas blowers. So that's going to come up to city council again as an issue. It's very, very hard to enforce. But in my mind, the way to enforce it is gasoline-powered blowers are just not allowed. That's it. That's easy. Not allowed, just like plastic bags. So I kind of would hope the city would move in that direction, because I carry the noise ordinance and etiquette rules in my car, and I give it to, you know, various people using it at the time. But I don't know if you found it a problem, but they're extremely noisy, and they create a tremendous amount of dust into the air. So I don't think they're even all that effective. So that's something hopefully the city council would be working on. I would love, you know, they would love to hear your input on it. So I think that's another direction we're going. When you look back on our record, we've had the single-use plastic bag ordinance, and we are the first city in the county to do that. The city of Ventura is working on it, so hopefully they'll have one out soon. And that leaves Miramonte and Oakview, right? So if we have this corridor where you could walk into Rite Aid and get plastic bags galore, there's probably thousands of them that go out every day. So I happened to run into Steve Bennett not too long ago, and I said, "What's going on with this?" He said, "Well, he promised he'll bring it up in January." I guess most of the county areas do not have big stores like Rite Aid. It's mostly a city issue. But I don't really know. I mean, I don't know what's in outside Camarillo as far as stores that give out single-use plastic bags. But I sure do know that Rite Aid gives out thousands of them a day. So it would, to me, make sense that the city of Ojai has a single-use plastic bag ordinance, the city of Ventura has one, and the corridor of 33 should have one. But there's five areas where other county supervisors go in, and that's questionable. I even called Linda, Linda, what, at Parks, and she's Thousand Oaks, and she's, and she's very environmentally concerned, but she hemmed and hawed to me like, "Well, we don't have too many stores, blah, blah, blah." But they only need a three-to-two vote to get it, and I think that would be wonderful if we can get rid of them in the county. Santa Barbara County has it. Santa Barbara County, which does not have necessarily a very environmentally friendly board, has adopted no single-use plastic bags. So I think we're on the right track here, and I'm very proud of Ojai that we have been the first to do it. The other wonderful news is, remember I mentioned to you, the library has got this huge donation and other, we have about $500,000 altogether to spend on a addition to the library that will go behind where the bookstore is. And they have sent out, they've been interviewing various Ojai architects to think about the plan, and I'm very happy to say one of them is our own commissioner, Mr. Foster. And so they want to fast-track this. They got the money in the bank, so it's not a question, the money's not there. So hopefully, within a few months, you will be looking at a concept plan, and then possibility of the actual plans, and we'll basically get that project done. Thing about doing it on the land behind the Ojai Library bookstore, the Friends bookstore, is that's private land. So that, when they were thinking of putting the meeting room to, on the south side of the building, that would have been county property, okay? And you would not believe the red tape, the hassles, the pricing that they said would cost to build a meeting room. So the Friends were so disgusted with the county that they decided they want to just do it on the land that they own. And the whole reason that the Friends bought Jacques Van Dyck's property was, and it was expensive, it was like $800, $900,000, but it was to buy it because it had the land behind it and to the right. So I'm very excited about that project, and I'm sure you folks will be looking forward to seeing any concept reviews that come up. But I know that the Friends want this fast-tracked in terms of getting it done. The money is sitting in the bank, there's no reason, you know? That's a big plus. So hopefully, we're going to have, you guys will see the fun of having projects presented to you and concept plans, so I'm looking forward to that very much. I mean, I've always been a library person. I'm in there two, three times a week, so we need a bigger library, so this is going to be wonderful. That's about it, so. Oh, I was wondering, anybody here from Marlene, like Kathy, our old commissioner? Have you heard from Marlene or Jesse at all? How they're doing in Arizona and?
I did hear from Marlene, and she's doing, they're doing well.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She didn't, she didn't mention if she was, got into the planning commission there or not, but I think her husband was kind of indicating that he didn't want her to get in. But no, they are, they're doing well.
Great. She was a loss to Ojai, a real loss to have, lose Marlene. Anyway, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Carol. So with no further business, I adjourn the meeting.